All right. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Library Trustees. And our first order of business would be to welcome our new trustee.
All right.
And next, we should be electing.
Should we go or would you just?
Oh, yes. Yes, we should. LeAnn Hammond, trustee. Kaitlin Brown, director.
Teddy Kokors, trustee.
Shep Ferguson, trustee.
Daniel Richard, trustee.
Mike Hanlon, trustee.
Dan O'Call, library director.
Great. So our first order of business is to elect officers for our intern.
Can I make a motion that we elect LeAnn Hammond's chair, Shep Ferguson vice chair, Mike Hanlon treasurer, and Teddy Kokors secretary?
I think someone else has to nominate you.
Oh.
I think you can nominate us.
Can you nominate?
Yeah, you can nominate Slate and then have a second. Would anybody like a second?
I'll second that.
You sure you don't want to vote?
Give me something that it does.
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna say, by making the motion, you get your, you're in the minutes.
We're gonna jump down to your employee introductions.
Yes, thank you. So tonight, we have with us Jacovary McNeely. She's our newly hired digital librarian. And we emailed her resume to you earlier today. And I just wanna have Jacovary tell us a little bit about herself and what brings her to Watertown.
So my name is Jacovary McNeely. I'm not from the Northeast at all. I actually grew up in Georgia, bounced around to Oregon and Texas where I worked in libraries there as well. Graduated with my MLIS from Valdosta State University in 2017. Ended up in Watertown because of this position. The digital services librarian is a perfect match for my interest in technology as well as, you know, wanting to provide knowledge and service to the adult population.
So you've had experience working as a, in the similar position of a library?
My previous position was in Plano, Texas as a paraprofessional. We got to do a lot of different things. I've done professional conference presentations, I've done Storytime, I've done programming, I've managed devices, I've done a lot of different things in that position.
You actually saw the position here listed?
From the ALA job list.
And then it came up?
Just me, my husband, my cat, and my Corolla.
How did you persuade your husband?
Told him that it was, you know, my next step in my career and he's like, "All right, let's go for it."
Have you ever spent any time in New York?
No, he lived in New York for a bit. So he's like, "You know it's gonna be cold, right?"
Does he use a library base for just running over the town and slip back?
Okay, well, thanks, Jacovary.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so on to the second floor. Does anybody have any corrections now?
I had a couple of things. So... Under strategic plan on the second page. So it doesn't say where that money is to come from, it's from committee expenses? And then, under Griffin Fund. So I wanna like kinda clarify that it's not a transfer. And sometimes it gets a little confusing about what's a transfer and what you're just appropriating. So it's really an appropriation. So we're requesting an appropriation from the Griffin Fund in order to offset rising periodical costs. And I would say Mr. Hammond made a motion to utilize the funds and the trustees voted to approve that. So we're not transferring that money anywhere, we're just using it from the Griffin Fund.
Sure, okay.
Make a motion to approve the minute's ads and... Second motion?
Motion's been made and seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
Next. Public Forum, so you know what? To Red Leaf Cafe, it's Donald.
He's not here.
He's not here. So on to the financial report.
Did anyone have any questions on any of the items in the packet? Seeing as how we just haven't had any electric pressure.
Could, could I just ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Because this is like the halfway point in terms of December. And I wanted to ask in terms of the big items, which is salaries and gas, electrical, et cetera. It seems like we're around 50%. So there's a little wiggle room going forward, but do you anticipate anything in the next six months that might knock us off track?
You know, it's just the usual things, like major building repairs or anything like that that are unexpected. So as far as expected, we're really on track.
And obviously, the new staff members has just, has just come on. Are there any other openings or anything you foresee in the next, say, quarter?
Not that we're aware of, no.
And you have a quarter breakdowns too, which is very helpful.
I should go ahead and ask one other question. I'm just curious. There is a lot of part-time in the budget. And I'm just curious about, because there, the budget has about... Well, it's got $300,000 compared to $800,000. And three, that's about 10 people working for a year, right? So what? You're using a lot of person or?
You know what, it'll become more clear when I go through the budget presentation for FY '21. So if you could...
Yeah, that's fine.
Kind of wait till that, that would be great. Yep.
Could I ask you another question just regarding, I'm sure the page is somewhere. Vendor, Minute Man, Minute Man Press involved him regarding newsletters. That's obviously something we can't do in-house.
Right, exactly.
And why couldn't we do it in-house?
Uh, just for the, we don't have like the paper or the expertise to do that. And it's, and it really is cheaper to do it.
It's the newspaper or type of paper?
More glossy.
We're onto grants?
Yes, whatever you like. Any other questions?
I just wanted to make sure, on the very bottom of the grant page.
Yes.
In terms of Legmeq. Assuming that where it says on the notes trustees discretion, and then this three vacant, uh, open lines, that all three of those items revolving printing account, friends of project literacy, et cetera, are all trustees discretion?
Well, no, they're not trustees discretion in that they are... So the, so the first three, other, other funds of grants, we've got Cavney, Masters, and Benjamin Pierce.
Yes.
Those are all special trust funds. Okay? So then you have Legmeq, which is, how you can spend that money is determined by the Board of Library Commissioners because that's our state grant. The revolving printing account can be spent on items that benefit the public because the funds that we take in for that account are from people who pay to print here in the library. So we spend that money on like new printers or the software that manages the print management. And then friends of project, project literacy fundraising is only spent on project literacy. So that's why those are kind of blank.
Okay.
And the Pratt amount up there is still determined?
Yes, still issues at the town hall. Yep.
Does it affect anything that's currently in motion, which you would use funds for?
No, because we, last month, we voted to use Griffin Fund to offset the periodicals. So at this point, we can wait a year or two or whatever for those funds to become available.
Could I ask you a question regarding Hatch? When I was looking at the financials on the first page, I had written something which was do participants pay fees, expenses. But then I saw the second page, and assuming that that's what the call is to the far right? Is payment?
So, no, no. So that's all, that this is all either... So it's all, all of the expenditures there, all of those are payments. So all of the things that have names like David Kramer, those are teachers that we paid. Then there's Comcast in there, there's some just general supplies. There is one deposit of $825 for programming from a special gift that we look, we determined we used this year. But the rest is all payments.
So people don't pay for classes?
So no one pays for classes, class or anything, they just show up?
They make donations in competition.
Do you get much for donations?
We do, that's pretty much it. Yeah, people will send us $100 bucks, we have $500 donation for...
So how do you either record it or use those funds going forward?
So they, so it would show up in any of these documents here. If they designate it to Hatch, it would show up in here. I think we did have $100 recently that you'll see on the next quarterly breakdown. Yeah, so, but yeah, it's all recorded and it shows up in here.
Can I just, I'm reminded of one other question. We're using Comcast for internet. And it seems expensive, but is it? And why is Comcast and Hatch used separate from the library or the town?
Because we can't have a, they won't allow us to have a free service because it's not at the library. It's, it's not the town building, it's outside the building, so we tried to get that and it's gonna work. So yeah, we have to pay for it. And I think, I don't remember actually how we ended on Comcast. It might have been that that's who we have to go through for that building, I can't, I can't remember.
Because that's who services that building?
Yeah.
Another, I already went through moving touch. Anything else on treasurer's report?
Yeah. Make a motion, we accept the first, but seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
So on to the chairman's report.
Oh, that's me. So thanks for trusting me in the role and not already missing Tim. He kept the meetings moving on pretty well, but I'm listening to him and I'll look forward to serving. So we can move on to director's report if we'd like.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with a new item which just came up today. And I wanna have Caitlin talk about an internship grant opportunity that is upcoming. So Caitlin, can you do that?
So I have a little bit, I have some notes for you. So the Public Libraries Association, which is part of ALA, has a program called the Inclusive Internship Initiative. And it's a grant program that fifty, uh, public libraries can, can apply for. There's 50 awards throughout the country. And what it is, it's a $35, a $35 stipend for a public library to bring on a teen intern for the summer months. They work, you know, sort of full-time-ish and work on a project. They have a staff mentor. And, but the purpose is that it's a, it's an inclusive program geared towards diversity. So kind of working towards the, the reason it piqued my interest and I think why a lot of people are interested in it is because librarianship is a, is a very white, very woman-focused profession. And, you know, we're always talking about diversity in staff and wanting to reflect our communities, but when the people that, that get, have the skills that qualify to be a public librarian are mostly white, it's hard to diversify. So the, the intention of this is to get younger kids thinking about careers in librarianship. So it will be a lot of work. I'd have to get someone on staff to be on board. It's not, I wouldn't be, I think, the appropriate mentor. My role wouldn't really be a good fit for that anyway. I would hope that we would get some library level staff, while the department head to be the mentor because it's also a good opportunity to get, get leadership skills for, you know, the people that, the library that aren't my leaders. So the deadline is February 3rd. So I'm asking today, and I'm not guaranteeing that we're gonna go forward with it, but I very much want to if we can work it out. But I'm asking for your approval to apply for it if I can work all the details out.
Would Watertown teams get priority with each, with each of them? Okay.
Would it be priority high school students?
Yes, it's high school students. So there are few, there aren't a lot of, of, you know, kind of qualifications, but the, the teen has to be in the roughly like 16 to 19-year-old age range. There are two big events that both the mentor and the intern have to attend, one in DC, one in Chicago. It's all paid for, but the, and the mentor and the teen go together. Parents are welcome to go, but they have to pay their own way. It's not, it's not funded for the parents. So, and there's, you know, there's permission slips and all that legal stuff, you know, we work that all out. But I mean, it sounds like an awesome opportunity for the teens and the staff, also if someone has the drive to do it.
And this would be starting this summer?
Yep.
Yep.
And we would find out March 9th, we were selected. And it is competitive, so there's no guarantee that we get it.
So let me ask you a couple of questions. When would you initiate some sort of broadcast this back to Watertown High School?
As soon as we find out that we got the grant.
What about kids who live in the town but don't go to Watertown High School, but some other school?
That's fine.
Would, I guess the point is, would you post this online so that the entire community would know?
Absolutely.
So do we need a motion to, to approve going for this?
And I just had a question about how we navigate ensuring that this is a sort of non-traditional person. Like, how does that feel to me?
Well, I think, well, you have to look, there are, you could take a look and there are kind of, there's a job description. There, I mean, there are things that you have to, I mean, obviously, I think particularly Watertown because we are very, it's a white community. I mean, it's diverse, but it also is, is very white. I mean, it's, we can focus on race, but then there, there are lots of other ways in which we can, you know, be looking for diverse people. You know, I'll have to dig through that a little bit more, but certainly.
We would probably reach out to the school, the high school, to say, "Are there people that you would recommend that we could, you know, pursue and so on and so forth as well?"
Post it in the cafe?
So the February's coming up kind of quick. Would you, your first step would be to see if there's interest here in the library for someone to take on the role? Do you kind of have an idea of it?
Um, well, we, there's only a handful of libraries that are, that are also department heads. So, you know, there's discussion already. But, and I, I told them that I would wanna make a decision to move ahead by next Friday, so. And the application isn't very involved, so I'm not concerned about that process. It's just finding someone who will commit and...
Let me ask you a question. If you file the application, and then at some point, you're going to let high school students know. So which comes first, the acceptance of the grant and then you find the candidate?
Yes.
So they would be looking at us as a library, like whoever the...
PLA, yeah. So, yeah, so PLA is going to say, "You can do this program, we'll give you the money." We're the ones responsible for recruiting, the intern, hiring the mentor and all that. So they're just giving us the money and they're telling us what we have to do to qualify to get that money, which is attend these two events, also attend some online events, educational things, and be a mentor.
And one other question, is this a new, a brand-new program?
It's three years old.
Or is it something that we've just been, we've heard?
Yes, I, this is the first time I've done it. So third year they've done it, they've had 152 interns and 117 other libraries have participated.
Sounds great. So do you need a motion from us to, to allow me to apply?
Motion to approve the application? Seconded?
Motion's been made to approve the application for the Inclusive Internship Initiative. Favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So next, I'm gonna do the budget last under my report.
Okay.
So next, I'd like to do the consideration and action on the LSTA grant application. And you have that in your packet with a memo. And it's a Strengthen Families grant. And Emily Miranda, who's a supervisor in Children Services, would like to apply for this grant in the amount of $10,000. The draft of the application is due on Thursday, February 20th. We don't, she hasn't come up with her final draft of the application yet, but we are hoping that you will approve her before we do this.
Are there any, as I look at this, I was wondering, are there any other or are there any restrictions as to who would be eligible?
It's public libraries in Massachusetts who are eligible to apply for this grant.
And how would you gather families to participate?
Well, that would be up to Emily. Sure, how she...
The, according to the text of the grant, it's, it's designed to help basically underserved families.
Right.
So that they can make use of the library. Somehow you find that out talking to people.
Right.
But I think this is fantastic.
Yeah, it sounds great. So she's drafting her...
Yes.
I would propose that we...
Seconded.
All right, so motion's been made to apply for the Massachusetts Library Strengthen Families Grant. It's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye. I just have one question. Is it just one grant for the whole state or are there multiple, do you know?
I think there are multiple.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it would be just one library.
Thank you.
Next is consideration action on Legmeq request to upgrade the website calendar. And I included a detailed memo in the packet. I'm just to Caitlin for helping me out with that. So we had, you know, many suggestions, complaints, you know, situations with the calendar. And this is our attempt to combine and upgrade the calendar experience for both staff and patrons. And we think that it will be a much-needed upgrade to the calendar. So it's my recommendation that we use Legmeq funds for this project. And the estimate is 66-something? 66.15 to 99.75. So up to 99.75 for, for the project. And Caitlin will be happy to answer any question.
Well, I would, I'd like to. Number one, is there any sort of oversight in terms of who puts in a request for space in the building?
Yeah, it all gets approved. Natasha approves everything, so she has to review everything that was there for the, for the meetings, not the study rooms.
So I mean, it could be, I don't know, the Boy Scouts. And the next one could be something that's way out there.
As long as it's free and open to the public.
That's all we're looking for. So we're not, we're not doing other...
Those are the restrictions. It has to be free and open to the public. But there are many people who wanna use our rooms that are not free and open to the public, so they get denied.
So somebody may...
And you can't, you can't afford the six, the six reservations in a six-month period.
Right.
So if business tried to book a room?
And say, "We wanna see our retreat here and no one else can come in," that's a no.
Okay. And would they put in their request on the calendar and then Natasha would see it? And she'd call them and say, "No, that's here, that's..." And does that process change?
It's the same. Uh, there's a little bit of upgrades, but like it's still the essential same. Like a human has to actually approve everything on the weekends.
So, so let's say that this room was available. So somebody can book this room for six months in a row?
Once, once per month for six months in a row. You can only have six reservations. You could do it six days in a row, but then you can't do anything again for another six months.
And we currently, reservations have to be only like three months in advance? Would it, with this new calendar, would it be possible, like just things like?
Just because we wanna get our library programs...
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah, I was looking for where the library steering committees are. It is hard to figure out where these are.
Another question. On the, on the back room downstairs, so big events. Obviously, the library reserves it when they know that they're gonna do events. But once the calendar is filled in and there are gonna be library events there and there are gonna be outside events there, they're all gonna be visible to the public in an integrated way.
Yes.
Which is a new thing.
Yes.
And that's, I think that's great. Because for, I've been involved, I'm doing events here. And it's great PR to have it on the library calendar, it's really useful.
Yeah, so the, the major thing to know is that it's not going to default to the community events, which is one of the main reasons we didn't use the Civic Plus calendar because that would vary all the library permits because there's so many things happening. But what will happen is it'll be, you go to the calendar, it's all library events, and then there's a box, you click community events, everything shows up. That's the goal. That's what I, that's what I told them a lot. So, and that's, that's what we're hoping to get, but Civic Plus doesn't have it, won't allow us to do that, so.
Is there any way for, somebody can reserve a room and then say a week goes by and it's like, you know, whatever the, the meeting room was gonna be called for, now they don't need the room, so they can go back in? And, but is there any sort of, let us know within 24 hours, 48 hours, or then you're going to keep the reservation or not?
We do have a policy on that. We're pretty liberal about it though. I think it's, I don't even know what it is, it might be 48 hours. But it's also like, it would be really, really hard for us to, something like super strictly, just because while we have to know that they don't show up and we don't, we don't go and check and make sure people actually show up to their events. We don't have the people power to do that.
But I don't think it's really an issue.
I don't know.
Yeah, I was just curious whether or not you could...
Whether is the main point.
Give somebody else one, like you're on a waiting list now.
Yeah, we, we don't have a waiting list, so. Sometimes if someone really wants a, wants a room, Natasha will say, "I can take your name and like, you know," if someone cancels it, but that's the most we've ever done, but it doesn't happen.
Do users have to come from Watertown?
No.
And usually the meeting rooms are pretty booked, right? I know I've tried to book something within the week and not had any, so.
Will it be waiting count, distinguish between like libraries, like official events versus ones that someone just booked the room for? Make that clear?
So it, yeah, I've got, and that will work that out in the, the whole design process. But like if you look at the, if you look at it now, if you look at the event calendar now, there's, there's delineation between like children's, whatever, it'll be probably something like that. But we will definitely make sure that that's clear because, because that will be important.
As far as occasionals, some very controversial topics that people present on it, I think it's important that like, we distinguish that this is like someone we're planning to happen but not like endorsing what's being discussed, if that makes sense? but not like endorsing what's being discussed, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
We've been there before.
Yeah. Rest, I've seen some fires with those stuff.
Um, and what would the timing be of this, sorry?
Um, they, I, if we get approval, yeah, we would start. I told them I wanted to start it and I think it was like a month turnaround time, so it could be pretty fast. Maybe six weeks.
Yeah, it would be pretty slick.
Yeah.
Fine, so we need a motion to.
Uh, motion to approve the, uh, the calendar upgrade. Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded to, um, approve the, uh, sorry.
Calendar upgrade.
Our calendar upgrade, yeah. How, do we have a vote?
We'd like to vote on it.
Aye.
Alright. Yeah, decided. Thank you.
Uh, and then next we have consideration in action on a request to transfer $416 from part-time salaries to clothing allowance. And the reason for that is that we, um, recently hired a new custodian. And we budget for clothing allowance for the existing custodians at the beginning of the fiscal year. What happened was we paid that at the beginning of the fiscal year. So we paid our custodian at the time, who then transferred over to the Public Buildings Department. We hired a new one. She has to get paid her clothing allowance, so we need to just transfer that money so that we have the money to do that for her.
Could strip the uniform off.
What was the dollar amount again?
Four hundred and sixteen dollars.
Make a motion that we transfer funds, uh, four hundred and sixteen dollars to clothing allowance. From which account?
Part-time.
From part-time under budget. Seconded?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to transfer four hundred and sixteen dollars from part-time salaries to clothing budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna go on to the various updates. Let me just find. That, okay. Um, so furniture purchase. Um, we got a small amount of money left over in a town account for the renovation of this building, so it's really old money. Um, and we used it to buy two new study tables and chairs for the second floor. You can see them right out there, deliberate and being used already. Um, next update is internet upgrade. So we have been experiencing for an extended time, some outages and slowness. And it has not been really diagnosed properly. And until recently, um, so we were, we were concerned that there was a problem out in the street with the Comcast connection, um, went around and around and around with that. And really kind of determined that the internet pipe that we have is really getting exaggerated and filled up on a regular basis, mainly in the late afternoons when everyone is here with their devices and on the computer. So, um, in order to fix that problem, we've decided to add a second line. Um, and we had, um, RCN come out and do a quote. Um, and they can provide us with some high-speed fiber internet connections. And so what we, what I decided to do was to add an existing, to the existing Comcast, which is a hundred by fifteen, a three hundred by three hundred fiber RCN line. So what we would do is use the existing Comcast connection for free Wi-Fi, let that flow, and then put everything else on the RCN line, which is, this is really high speed. And then if either one of those goes down, we would configure it to switch to the other internet provider. So we would always, unless there was a total catastrophic, catastrophic failure of the internet, we would always have internet access at some point. So our current cost for that, um, Comcast connection is a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Adding the RCN line would be another two hundred and thirty-seven dollars a month. But I think that it is really, at this point, it's critical to add that. Um, and that's monitored and coordinated through Minute Man Library Network. So I've been in conversation with them. We've decided that that's how we're gonna, that's how we're gonna proceed. And so, um, as you'll see when I do my budget presentation, um, we're gonna have to make a, a little adjustment to that. But I think that's the best way to go for that.
Well, let me ask you, say if you rolled back five years ago to today, the use is some percentage greater than it was?
Exactly, and, and you know, we're also, when our circulation system is also on the internet. So every, every book that gets checked out, checked in, that also goes over the internet. All of our catalog goes over the internet. Everything that people are doing on the public computer is goes over the internet. So it's a huge demand on, on that one existing line.
So if anything, going forward, say the next five years, is this gonna be mounting, uh, demand again?
Absolutely. And you know, everyone's device is already, when they walk in the building, is already configured to pick up the wireless, whether they use it or not, they're still, they're still hitting that.
Did you, um, did you go to RCN specifically to have a, like second, entirely second infrastructure option?
Well.
So Comcast goes down and RCN is still.
Right, so what we did was, was look at all of the options, whether to just get a bigger pipe from Comcast.
Yes.
Or go completely with RCN or a combination of the both. And I thought that this was the best.
And the business. And those are the only two options in town, right?
The, the reason Minute Man is monitoring this is because so much of the cataloging and searching is.
Yes, we contract with them to provide internet service. Yes, yeah, that's part of our membership fee. So they, they coordinate every internet connection with every single library network.
What would happen if you went independent?
It's called cessation for the.
She's squishy.
Yes. And I talk about that all the time.
I think the union, they. And then there's the construction.
Do you know, we're not gonna talk about that. And anyway, is this, um, something that other libraries have encountered too? Like, do you know, uh, the larger line now is, yeah, Boston Public, the new library, or, you know. They already, yeah, kind of a second line there.
Uh, did you go back to Comcast since you've had the RCN quote?
Um, we're not legally allowed to do that.
You don't, okay, alright, alright, nevermind. The number of times I've gotten a little discount from Comcast has been like, I'm gonna switch to Verizon. Looks like a challenge.
Can't do that, it's felony, yeah. Okay, door project. Uh, the project, the number ends. Um, so there are only a couple of small items left to be done. One's a light and the other is to paint the, um, the, um, what do you call it? Down there at the entrance, at the back entrance. There's some, uh, sheet, well, sheet, um.
Baseboard.
Needs to be painted, baseboard. The word is. Where's our, uh, difficult, am I, the dance age? So yes, so we don't know when that's gonna happen. They're not gonna come back and do the painting until they have the light fixture, so that's still outstanding.
At least purely cosmetic at this point, like it's.
Yeah.
Have you had any issues with, I mean, you have to now open two doors as opposed to the previous where it was mechanism order. So you have parents with children and baby carriages, everything else is.
Well, they just press the handicap button and it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's so much warmer in here, as you can tell, I know.
I noticed something the other day, however. If you decide you wanna put your materials back in the audio visual. Return outside.
Return them in outside, doesn't matter.
And some, no, but somebody hits the automatic, the door opens. I saw somebody standing there, he pushed up against, they got hit. It's not real serious, but.
Right. It is, yeah.
Because of where everything got moved.
Exactly. Yeah. It's not gonna kill anyone.
No.
Oh, yeah, standard circulation is happening, sure. It's not being a circulation.
So, I'm assuming that there's a reaction from the staff?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's warmer here, yeah.
Yeah, I asked the other day and they said, oh, it's much better.
That's great.
That was, was the response. Good to hear.
So we need to look at like the long-term heating of this year versus past year and see how much of a difference it's making in terms of the budget for heating?
Oh, we can, um, but there's also other variables.
Yeah, you know, the temperature, yeah.
But we can look back once we.
That'll be interesting.
Years go by, yeah.
Do we could report them like the number of thermes we're using?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we track all that. Okay, we're on to the budget. Okay, so I have a short presentation tonight, just because we have Teddy here. Welcome. And, uh, I think it's just good to go through all of the things every once in a while, just so everyone is on the same page and, and understands all of the parts of the budget. And what I am presenting and proposing for this year's budget. So. What we have here tonight is, first of all, um, in your budget, um, that I sent, that Natasha sent to you, our first page is the cover page. And it's called Next Year Budget Comparison Report. And I'm just gonna go through what these items are. And I have my little.
Red dot.
Laser here, I can show you things. Um, so first of all is personnel, which is this whole section right here. And the, um, most of this is obviously the union contracts. So you can't really, there's not really any room for doing anything except in the part-time salaries, which I'm gonna show you once, once we get to another slide. So let's skip past the personnel and just go down to this section. Yes, Mike?
Do you have any union contracts that are up for in this forthcoming fiscal year?
Um, I'm not sure. I think the town hall union maybe, yeah.
Yes.
Um, and I don't, not at the library.
No.
So, give town hall. Um, so we go down to this section and we have, first up, electricity and gas. Those are three percent per town instructions in order to offset the cost of the ESCO project. So Teddy, a few years ago, the town undertook a major, um, project to make everything, um, you know, more energy efficient. And so those, they incurred, um, large costs to do that. So now they make each department do a three percent increase on their utilities. And then at the end of the fiscal year, those monies fall to the bottom line. They collect those and pay off the ESCO, so that's what that is. Uh, next is equipment maintenance, which is zero-two-four-zero. Um, there's a three thousand dollar increase in this account for, um, hatch equipment and staff photo, photocopy or contract. Next is building maintenance, and that's zero-two-four-one. These numbers this year were provided to us by the Department of Public Buildings. They have access to a spend from this account. Monies have not been transferred from here to their budget because of the MAR issue. So, um, breakdown, the, these costs are on a later slide. And then we go to supplies. Wait, what did I, what did I miss here? Oh, yeah. Uh, computer maintenance is next. Um, there's a slight decrease on that one and the breakdown is also on a later slide. Uh, regional library services, which is this one right here, which is O-three-two-seven. That's our Minute Man membership. And as I said, we're gonna have to adjust that to pay for the new RCN connection. So that number I will change when we submit it to the town. So that's gonna have to be, um, increased by three thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, making a new total for that line seventy-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Next is program services, and that's a new account line in FY twenty. Uh, so that covers, uh, programs that we have here at the library. That's not all that we spend on programs. We get money from the BURC fund and from the building committee for programming. But I'm, um, increasing that by a thousand dollars just to further establish town funding for all of our extensive programming efforts. Next is postage, and that's staying the same. Um, Caitlin, what did you give me?
I thought, I thought that was, I thought we did six thousand for the additional, request for additional funds, six thousand.
Something, something is off here.
FY twenty-twenty-one has, has bumped everything out there.
Yeah. Something went wrong here on this.
So the corresponding line is, is one cell out.
Yeah.
Oh, it's.
I wonder why that happened.
Yeah.
Wait, there's on the sheet.
So let me do this. Let me. Oops.
That's one is correct.
Go back into editing. Anyway, I think you can see there's just one down.
Yeah, there.
So that's supposed to be sixty-five hundred. Um, so postage hasn't changed, keeping that at the same. That's what we pay our, to pick up our mail at the post office. Office supplies is same, twelve thousand dollars, not recommending any change. Printing is the same, um, not recommending, uh, a change to that. Program supplies is in the other new, um, line this year, keeping it at five hundred dollars. And then building maintenance supplies is an increase of a thousand dollars. And that, again, is controlled by the Department of Public Buildings, and that's what they're recommending, um, as a budget for that.
So even though that's all centralized, this still comes under our budget?
Yes, so the issue is, I think what they would, what the town would like to do is, is take these lines out of our budget completely, including the public buildings. But with the MAR, with the Board of Library Commissioners, they take the three last years, they average that, multiply it by one point two five. We have to increase our budget by that amount. If all of those lines go out of our budget, then we're, then we're not meeting the MAR. Okay, so this, this sheet is fine. Um, so, let's see, we didn't do books though. Library.
How did the book processing drop so much?
It didn't drop. Book processing?
It says actual fifty-seven in nineteen nineteen, and it goes to forty-one thousand.
Wait, what?
I'm looking at.
Kids look at the next slide.
Next data.
Okay, so library materials goes, we're going from, I'm recommending four hundred and fifteen thousand, um, two thousand up from this year to four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
I was gonna say, I don't think seventeen dozen's gonna do it.
Yeah. And then, so on this side, you see book processing is forty-one thousand five hundred, which what we do is, that's, that account is used for purchase, pre-processing of items or after purchase supplies, library cards, related items. We use a ten percent of the book budget to make that book processing budget.
The one question here was the, the two thousand nineteen line is fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Oh, yes, there was one time monies to conserve a map. There was. There was a request for additional funding that we got in FY nineteen. Yep.
That's the one that's in the hallway downstairs?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, one up here, sorry.
One up here.
Year before, with the other one. Um, interstate travel is the same. Dues and subscriptions is going up because there are only two things that we paid for from dues and subscriptions, American Library Association dues and the membership for Digital Commonwealth, and that fee is going up in FY twenty one. Next is Project Literacy. So you see here sixty-two, three twenty, down to eighty-six, thirty-five. We took, um, we made the Project Literacy teachers employees, right, within contractors in FY nineteen. Um, so that's why that money came out of there. Um, so I just wanna review for everyone that Project Literacy Services are funded by a three-prong approach: town funding, grants, individual donations. So for FY twenty one, we project that eighty-two percent of what we spend on literacy services will be funded with town monies. That ensures the sustainability of literacy services. And so we're de- depending less and less on individual donations and grants because we feel strongly that this is an essential service of the library. So this account particularly is for general supplies for the programming. The bulk of town funding is found in the personnel accounts.
Could I ask, in terms of the grants, who, who organizes or puts the grants together?
Um, it's a collaboration between the Director of Project Literacy and the Friends of Project Literacy.
So do they still maintain or try to get as much as they can through grants?
Um, they are, at this point, what they do is they're going for a limited number of grants because there is now so much funding from the town.
Are we still seeing growth, like demand growth as we have had?
Well, the, we have, the, the waiting list is going down because we are adding more classes.
That's great.
Um, or training more tutors. Um, I think the demand would be endless, especially, you know, more people from outside Watertown, but we're limited by space and staff.
Yeah.
So, we can do, that's what we can do. Um, next two items are community expenses, which are staying the same as trustee expenses, and the staff development, we're keeping at $10,000. So that is the end of library expenses. So then we go to library capital, the next two accounts. And those are made up of library improvements, which is at forty-one thousand, and we're keeping that at that amount. Um, so it's things that, um, we wanna do, like this year we're gonna be purchasing some furniture, but it can also be used for, we have to do major repairs to the HVAC or something along those lines. The next line is replacement of equipment, and as you can see, I'm asking for an increase of $6,000 um, because it, it, this account is used to purchase mainly technology. Um, I don't think that we've been able to replace our equipment or, uh, at a pace that really keeps up with what we need. So I, I think we wanna advocate for the town to up that line to $20,000. Any questions on that before we move on to the next slide? Okay, next is personnel slides. So this slide is just our part-time people. It's totally, uh, with the exception of me, are, um, you know, determined by the library and town contracts. Next slide is the part-time. And so the top number with all the names, those are determined by the library and town hall contracts. Then we have the part-time subtotal. Then we have Project Literacy part-time, those are the teachers, teachers only. The Director of Project Literacy and her assistant are both in the, um, up here, uh, part-time assistant here, and then fill up on the first page. And then we have our part-time hatch assistant there, and then temporary part-time. And the temporary part-time includes all of the coverage for any untaken shifts during the week or the weekend, the, um, coverage for vacations or sick time, and then pages. So that's all included in temporary part-time, and then partial total for that. Any questions on that?
So, I, I've just totaled up these eleven staff people here who are part-time.
Part-time, yeah.
So. Uh, I guess I'm looking at, um, are they on some sort of a schedule? In terms of that, you could say to somebody, you could be a part-time person at the library for the next calendar year or six months?
No, that's permanently for however they work for the town.
I see.
Unless they apply for a, on a full-time job. Okay, next up is the supplies and the services expenditure worksheet. So. Um, this is pretty much a breakdown of that cover sheet. Um, so what we have is, for example, the equipment maintenance budget, which I said was going up by $2,000, remember on that first page? So you can see exactly how that money is being, it's gone right there. And then next, as I said, I got those, these numbers from Department of Public Buildings. That's how they want to spend that money next year.
The custodians self-conus, so you have one emergency person who?
Uh, no, that's to have on them when they're working at the library, so we can call them if they're toilet overflows or whatever. Yeah. Um, and then on the next page, you have a breakdown of the computer maintenance budget. Um, the other ones don't have breakdowns. And then that's just other, all the, as I said, in my Digital Commonwealth. Not much more to see on that page. And then the capital, forty-one thousand, and then the increase in replacement of equipment is there. And then we're on to the request for additional. So this year, as you saw in your packet, I have three requests for additional funding. Um, in order of, um, priority, as far as I'm concerned, number one is part-time multi- history librarian. As you know, we've had two years of additional funding for a part-time archivist, and they have been going through the collection, really preserving what we have, um, looking at what we should get rid of, um, making recommendations along those lines. Um, I think it's time that we advocate for a permanent part-time person who can not only continue with that work, but also, um, do programming for both adults and children. Um, I think it's an important part of this library, which really should be continued.
Could I ask you, uh, who makes the determination whether or not to discard or?
Ultimately, in, for that room over there, I'm gonna be the one who does that. For the rest of the library, each department does that.
And why would you discard something? Just because it's not relevant anymore, or it's been damaged?
Right, so, one of the books that we have in the collection is Travels in India. That doesn't have anything to do with Watertown. For some reason, it ended up in that room, but it doesn't belong as part of Watertown's history. So, there are quite a few things that.
Taking a shot. Is that, is that a well-known travel book?
It could be.
What I'm asking is, where are your books?
Right.
And can you sell it?
I have a relationship with Kangalas. And, um, I've, we have, when I have things like that, I contact him. That particular book is in terrible shape. It would be worth dying.
How, how would a book like that end up in there?
I think that someone along the line said, "Oh, this looks interesting," and old, and we're just gonna throw it in the bowl of his collection. Other than that, no idea.
Cause the author.
It doesn't seem to have, um.
Yeah, maybe it was somebody's library who donated their books.
Well, didn't some of the books come from family collections also?
It could be, yeah.
Yeah, precise.
Right.
Might have been just one in there, yeah.
But is that a reason they keep it?
No.
No.
That's how it got there.
So has the contractor, the, the people, the folks who've been doing the work thus far, the contract hours, about like how far into the, the project have they gotten? What do you say?
Well, it depends on what part of it you're talking about. Um, cause there are a lot of different facets.
Yeah.
Um, because it, the, the collection isn't just books, it's not just papers.
Yeah.
It's all of those different things. Um, so it depends on how deep you wanna dive into each of those things.
Right.
Um, she's doing a really good job, but I would like it if she would stay and continue.
Yeah.
What she's doing, uh, and make it a really, you know, overall Watertown-focused and dynamic collection. And then we have to start collecting for the future. Because it's so, it's, we haven't done that yet, just because we haven't said, here's what we want to collect, here's where we wanna go with this collection. That's a really important part that hasn't even begun yet.
Right.
If you can keep the same person doing that, that's really important.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the amount of related knowledge they have internalized makes them really useful and great history librarian. And if, somebody can't just come in and take over the job.
Yeah, I'm grateful. We also are getting really good expertise with our reference librarians, too. Some MOB, um, I think is gonna be really critical as we move along, too.
In terms of programming, has there ever been like partnership with public schools, or like field trips for other events that like brings students to the library?
Yeah, absolutely, yep. Yeah, but it's, you know, it's hetero-math.
Yeah.
Okay, next, uh, number two in request for additional funding is community outreach librarian. So, and this is, uh, requesting a full-time position. Um, and as I put in the justification, feedback indicates a main reason for not using the library's lack of awareness, the library's programs and services. Person in this position would work in the community to raise awareness, assist in identifying new or different programs and materials for un, or underserved groups and individuals. I think it's, it's time, as we're seeing from our survey, as we're seeing all of the, you know, the feedback, that, um, we gotta get people out there to get people in here.
How's this type of work differ from the community outreach?
From the community engagement? Um, so he's more focused on writing and delivering PR, social media. This person is gonna be more coordinating of actual programming to entice people in here and to going out and, um, being with, you know, being part of Watertown meeting groups and agencies and so on.
Okay, so they would go to town meetings and maybe have a permanent table every week at the farmer's market or something?
Right, as much as we can, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, great, okay.
Yep. And then number three, um, also becoming, you know, very clear that people want more, are more, more electronic, downloadable, streaming.
If you can get them.
Yeah, it's, um, exactly.
Yeah.
Macmillan. Um, so, yeah, so, and it's pretty self-evident why we would want this, and hopefully the town can see that as well. So, that's the end of that presentation. Um, anyone have any questions on any part of the budget? Um, I have one, couple other things that I just wanted to talk about. Um, if you wanna pass those out, these are drafts of job descriptions for those two positions that were, were asking for the town, asked that we present those. Um, and in the org chart, you'll notice that the custodians have been taken out. Um, technically you report to Public Buildings now. And I think that's all I wanted to point out.
Could I ask just another question on the first? There are a couple of custodians in here, and when the city took over maintenance operations, you know, six months ago, whatever, didn't a number of people move from here into the general city budget or not?
No, no.
What happened?
None of the custodians' salaries have moved from our budget. Because of the MAR issue.
If we have these new positions added, would that help? Put us in line? I'm guessing otherwise this is happening across Watertown, that they're moving the budget into the.
I haven't, I haven't been told that that's what's happening. I assume that's what's happening, I don't know.
Okay.
But this person who is overall supposed to be responsible for Watertown building.
Right.
Is also nominally managing these people?
Yes.
In a vague way, I would presume. Here managing, sort of in a day-to-day way.
There's a, the Department of Public Buildings has a custodian supervisor. Yes.
But, they, they don't, they still refer to you guys here, saying, "What do we need?"
We're still, we're still making the transition. Any other question?
Oh, you know, I, I wanted to ask you, um, if there's been anything new in terms of the police station?
Not that I have heard. I think that, you know, every year we go to our budget presentation and we say, you know, we wanna be first in line for when that gets renovated or rebuilt or whatever it has to do with it. Yeah.
Could you put the hatch there?
Uh, I, we have been advocating since the very beginning, I'm hoping that that's will happen.
Have they spent any, you've said, um, that building?
No, hopefully, yeah, no.
So, would it be, I mean, would it be appropriate as a board to, to write to the town to say, you know, we'd wanna reiterate that we're still building, you know, is there any advocacy that we can do as a board?
Yeah, I think anything you can do, letter or personal, you know. Absolutely.
I'd make a motion that, that we as trustees send a letter to the, um, town manager and the town council president, um, asking for consideration that if and when the police station becomes available, that we can put the hatch program in.
One second.
Actually, I have a question, does that seem useful?
Absolutely, I mean, I need, a month will help. Yeah.
Sure, make sure there was a, hold your call.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I mean, the unfortunate thing is, is it's been, it's been, um, vacant for, I don't know, four years, five years?
Yeah.
You know, and obviously, you keep a building empty for that long a time, it, you know, it, its condition gets worse, not better. But, um, it would still be suitable if it was, were gonna be, be a good spot for hatch. Right next door.
I think the reputation of the hatch may be a really strong argument for it, cause even. even Mark Sideris the other night at the inauguration praised the hatch as a great successful program in the city.
And others are cautioning their own programs based on hatch, so, yeah. I think it's a good idea and so a motion's been made to, to draft a letter to the town manager.
I'm sorry.
So, uh, and it's been seconded, so, with, all in favor?
Aye.
You should write the letter.
All right, I'll write the letter.
You volunteered.
No, I only go on tip, oh, tip back.
Okay, um, can we have a motion on the budget?
Yes, yes.
And I have to be as amended because I need to change that, uh, item for the Unitman Library Network and three thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars to that line.
Okay.
So it could, it can be a motion just to accept the budget proposal as amended?
Okay, so we're seeking a motion to accept the budget proposal as amended?
So, second?
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And that's it for me.
Do you have an idea when, um, I mean, obviously there's probably three months or four months to go in this process?
Yeah, so January twenty-second, Leanne and I will go meet with the town manager's budget team and then, you know, we'll go in front of the town council in, in May probably.
Okay.
It's the usual process.
What time is January twenty-second?
I think it's four o'clock, I think I should be in the packets.
So that's the library steering sort of.
Yes. Oh, it's the two, yeah, it's the same day.
Okay.
It's not in there. Yeah, it's, I believe it's at four o'clock.
Okay.
Actually, I know it's at four.
So next on the agenda, old business, I hope there is any old business, um, here later. And, um, then we're on to new business, the consideration and action on selection of Strategic Planning Committee members. As you know, Caitlin already, uh, longlisted, and, um, it's great that we have so much interest in this board, in this committee, speaks volumes for the library and the impact that it has on the town. And so I'd just like to figure out, because thirty-four people would be a big committee, so we, we are going to, um, to narrow down the list and, um, first of all, um, maybe Leon could, uh, suggest an appropriate, like, number to aim for and, um, just.
Yeah, so, we think that, um, you know, probably the, the limit should be five. And as we talked about, Caitlin and I did sift through and, um, try to come up with some recommendations for you, um, and it, it, it really is thrilling to see that so many people really want to be involved and it was really, really hard to, to choose, like, five people from there. Um, but as we, you know, we want it, we want to have as diverse a, um, group as possible with, you know, people who bring different insights, different skills and so on, but, um, we did come up with a list of five, um, and, you know, based in no particular order, Rose Marie Sue, Izwaria Abayamani, Daniel D'Amico, Marie Danziger, and Julia Carpenter. But again, um, really
What were the names again?
Rose Marie Sue, Izwaria Abayamani, Daniel D'Amico, Marie Danziger, and Julia Carpenter.
And I just want to point out that Robert Tennis withdrew, so he's off with the Okay. Okay. Yeah, I guess, um, my only question is, so the, this committee will be made up of five residents who we choose from this group. Will also be made up of the trustees, that's been what we've done in the past.
Right.
And then, um, you had said also two staff members.
Two staff members in addition to Caitlin and myself, yeah.
So that's up to fourteen plus maybe a town councilor if anybody shows interest. So that's fifteen. So, five, it's, it's just really hard to narrow it down to five because I had a few other candidates that I was like, oh, I really would like to, to, to have this person because they have so much data analysis, or this person because it's a social work background, you know? So, would there be any way to, to increase the number from?
That's up to you, it's really up to you guys.
Because it becomes an unwieldy number at some point, so you have to, you have to stop somewhere, but
But in, in the process of the Strategic Planning Committee, what is that gonna look like? In terms of how many people we have involved? How many subcommittees are there gonna be? And so forth? Are you spreading these people out to five or adding some committees?
Yeah, so I have some ideas, um, and I can give you kind of an outlook of, so one thing that we really have to set up from the beginning is what this can be and what it can't be. You know, so we're a library, we're not contracting out some fancy consultant or anything. We're doing this ourselves, it's homegrown. These people that we choose to come in, they can be kind of our eyes and our ears, um, especially if we're getting people with different experiences of the library so they can give us their personal ideas. Um, and even that is also what you do and that's what your role is, but the, we want to get some people that don't have quite the power, you know, so we want to get people that have different views. I don't foresee tons of subcommittees, I don't, I mean, if we want to do that, we can.
Last time there were.
There were. I'm not in favor of them, um, I'm more in favor of talking about the survey results of us talking about library trends, of us talking about what's happening in our library, um, and kind of coming up with ways in which we can move forward. I personally don't think some committees are, committees are really that
Yeah, no, they're the ones that have served a great purpose and blessed.
No, I almost think
I remember the committee, I was not serving
They didn't serve anything. With all due respect.
I think some of it is, you know, when we opened the doors to this building, I think we, we needed to keep searching and finding people, but I think that through experience and with people responding online and everything else, obviously, to the survey, we've learned a lot. And, but, but yet there are some things that we were missing or something that's new that maybe hasn't hit the front door yet. So I, 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 I trust your judgment in terms of the people who were selected.
So I can tell you, like, what I was thinking for our first meeting, um, you know, it's gonna be obviously lots of interactions. I'm working on putting together a resource guide right now, it'll, it'll be a web link that'll have lots in it and you all can dig into it as you want, um, you know, prior to the, I'll have that sent home sometime next week. So, together, you know, we'll be looking at, at the trends and what's, and the issues that we need to know about and then we can talk about them and see how it relates to the survey data, how it relates to what we are hearing, um, and, you know, the different priorities that we've had. Also how it relates, and, you know, and I've talked about this a little bit, I know that the town comprehensive plan isn't maybe necessarily something that's always looked to, but I think it's important for us to take that into consideration, what other regional, um, plans are out there, um, there's a lot going on, so there's a lot for us to discuss and I think so we can guide each other through the different issues and how a library can be involved and, um, responding to, to what's going on. And, um, the, I know that in the past, all of the trustees have served on the committee and that's what you, you would like to see this time as well.
Sure.
So the meetings of the committee will be public meetings and, okay?
I was impressed by, I've spent some time on the list and, uh, there's some really impressive people in there. And maybe they were two high-power figures, that's your judgment?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we want a mix of people, I mean, there are a lot of data analysts on there, which is great, but we don't want everyone to be a data analyst. We want some people that know what they're looking at, um, but we really want community members, we really want new perspectives, we really want to know how people are using the library and what, what we're missing on and people who can give us that experience.
Five chosen, I mean, you've mentioned there are five, and a few people mentioned that there were relatively new residents.
There, yes, there were two, well, two were immigrants.
Yeah.
That I, and I think that's a great experience to bring to the table. One was a long-time resident, um, one, um, has the, had some public policy background, which sounded interesting, um, and one is kind of like a library super-user. Um, I don't know her personally, but I know that she's an avid library user and is friendly with staff and I think she would have some good insight, um, because she's here all the time.
Was there anyone who was a parent?
Uh, I think there was one of the, um, I think it was, um, what was her name?
People who was what?
Parent. Yeah, there was one of, one of those five was, um, small children, I think. And just as a, why I have the, um, two staff members, we have one of them is children's librarian and the other works in circulation, uh, Jo from circulation and Kaja, who was children's librarian.
You have children? I did.
Yes.
One of the people that you picked, Rose Marie Sue, who is an engineer and works on libraries, became a citizen through Project Literacy.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's kind of cool.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I, I was kind of interested in the person that had a social work background, I thought that might be an interesting perspective to have, I think we can maybe, we have talked about some people. I know. That's a lot, um, and I don't know, um, we had talked maybe about coming up with an alternate, just in case, because we're gonna judge these people and then, you know, you might have people that say, oh, really, not thinking about it, I, you know, so I would put forward the, the social work, maybe I think it was Jennifer Sideris. And, um, there was someone also who said that she had applied to be a trustee before, she just seems to have showed a sustained interest in the library, I think.
That's Sarah Dem.
Yeah, yeah.
Who'd been involved in heritage work in the UK.
Yeah. I mean, it was just
That wasn't super much of a Have you, uh, have you heard of the customers? Look together with schedule?
Yeah, they are.
Yes, I, I think I gave the schedule already, but yes, we have all, all of the, um, the meetings are on Wednesdays. They're on Wednesdays, it's at seven P M. So I'm gonna start what's I did, but wait, I think I signed it. I'm gonna actually put the schedule in the resource guide, I just still can't remember the website and all that will be on there too.
When we discussed the whole internship earlier, just popped a cloud in my head, was there any thought concerning actually reaching those at high school with a teenage, a young resident as part of the committee to, to get a different perspective of like, um, a user who might be more often using the teen room or something like that as opposed to the rest of the library?
It's an interesting idea, I don't know if it's something we would, like, would actually plan out.
How many meetings are you planning on having?
So we're doing, we started January, January through June, we'll have meetings. July we're taking off and then August and September we'll be kind of like reviewing the draft and everything.
Because you could recruit some high school students to come in to speak in one of those meetings. Make them urban, but
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, or even middle school students who seem to be the library's star. Yeah, we, and I think that's, that's kind of, I think, what the meetings would be better off doing, is inviting people and we can invite in the, you know, Steve McCoon and we can invite in different groups and we can, you know, to get different perspectives, um, so that we understand what we're doing rather than breaking off into little groups, you know, running around
Except I noticed downstairs there was a survey for the video game section, those stuff like that, and I feel like some, necessarily too much for little sixteen, maybe more up to date about, that's what I feel that as opposed to somebody who's maybe not immersed in that world as much.
Are you thinking of using a facilitator in these meetings?
It'll be me. No, we, I mean, we haven't, if it's something that you want, we have to, I don't know if we can
Well, I was wondering, if you've got thirty people in a meeting and you're trying to keep it focused and moving in one direction and you're trying to pick out the ideas.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we see how it goes to begin with and then if we find that we're floundering, reconsider after that? But
Yeah, why do we
Can you tweet that to a boss? And so, and I think as long as we keep the, we keep it around that fifteen-ish yeah, or Yeah. Up to twenty would be fine, but I think it's too much, I think fifteen's is a good number, definitely.
I mean, in this community, you'd probably find a good facilitator, a good volunteer if you had to.
Yeah, let's, let's see how it comes.
Okay.
All right, so, um, we need to vote, um, on going forward and
Right, do we wanna vote on each one or do you wanna vote on these recommendations or how do you wanna do it?
I think we could vote on the five recommendations and, um
I just wanted to, I was, I sort of, I wondered why we weren't considering the strong connection to the schools. I mean, obviously we'd bring people in from schools to, to be involved, but that feels like it could be a really useful
Oh, good. Oh, the, the
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we talked about that as well, there are two things, I, I think having that connection would be great.
Yeah.
Um, but on the flip side of that, you're also bringing in another person in town who has a lot of power that into a, into a discussion. I just wonder if, if you do want the school connection, maybe it would, it would be, I mean, no, I applied that has a school connection, but, um, that was kind of my, my hesitance on that, um, but, I mean, having a school, I mean, it is also a benefit, so I don't
I was interested in her application because she started by saying that she used the library as her computer access point, um, and I thought that that's
Between jobs.
That is an, that is an unusual, uh, thing for someone who also holds her position to, to have done, and I thought that's an interesting perspective to bring in, that she's both not like a whole computer user, but, you know, also has this position, strong position in schools, so.
All good points.
And you mentioned facilitator, there wasn't one person, Peter Heckel, who mentioned that either actually being part of the committee or even the facilitator as part of it is something separate, is like one of the skills he could possibly bring, so if he wanted to reach out to him as a possible facilitator, that could be another option.
He seemed a little institutional from what I've heard.
So he also applied to be a cancer and then his response to me was enthusiastic, but also he seems very, very busy, um, so I'm not certain. I wondered about that one for the conference call too, I think that's, that's a, that's a pretty, I mean, I imagine just a lot of these meetings.
No, I keep missing two of the names, I've got D'Amico, Danziger, and Sue.
Carpenter, Julia Carpenter, and Izwaria Abayamani, A B A.
I mean, one of her advantages is that she used the library all kinds of different ways, so really diverse use of the library.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that
I will say, you, you chose five people that I also pulled out of, like, a long list, I just said more than five. I had more than five, I mean, I could have selected between, I mean, you know, you could have many more than five.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
We had
It was too. Difficult to get to these five.
Marie Danziger, you're talking about powerful people.
Yeah.
She's clearly powerful.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
She's, if you look at her career. She's the department head of Kennedy School.
Yeah.
She's worked overseas a lot, you know, but that's, that's a That would have been a candidate.
But she doesn't hold the position here in town.
And she also has a lot to say about public policy and a lot of the overarching things, you know, MAPS see and, and all of their goals for the region.
The, the one piece I feel like we're sort of missing, or at least it's not obvious included, is, is, is someone who doesn't have a college degree. It seems like everyone It seems like everyone, I mean, I, I think almost everyone who applies.
What about Daniel D'Amico? Yeah, he said Water Town High, oh six.
He said Water Town High, six, and he's a soccer coach.
It's obviously very hard to tell.
Yeah, but, um.
Well, he coaches youth soccer, that's usually a volunteer or like.
Yeah.
But I don't know that he.
Which is great, actually, I think that's.
What his work was.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, it's, it's hard to tell, it wasn't obvious, he's been.
I liked that he was included because he's a native Water Town, you know, high school grad and, and, or he was.
He's a student analyst.
Analyst, yeah, he was the analyst that we chose, I think, I think he's the only analyst.
Alright. I think we could, after this discussion, have a vote to recommend the five that you recommended, if everybody feels that those five.
And what about the alternate?
The alternate, I, I was going to put forward the social workers, because that's a different perspective.
Jennifer Sederer?
Yep. Yeah.
And then you said Sarah Dem as well?
Yeah. Yep. And so, I'm.
I'll make a motion to seventy-five people who have been recommended and two additional people.
To serve as alternates?
To serve as alternates.
Okay.
She said Jennifer Sederer and Sarah Dem.
Yeah.
Sarah Dem, D E M.
She was running against you.
Yeah, I think she applied at the same time as I did.
Yeah. And then, doesn't she have our titles, please?
I think so.
Yeah. So, motions been made.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Good.
So it's for seven people.
Seven people, five, and then, and then, if we need, if any of those say no, we drive the alternates.
So I'll email them, I'll be emailing them tomorrow, and I'll give them a headline of Friday, and then they'll respond to me, and then I'll come back to the alternates.
Do we have? And then once. So we can give it to them, and then, yeah, so.
Once that's been established, she'll send an email out to everybody else, and thank you for the.
Yes.
Oh, we could mention that we should reach out to Marx, I should reach out to Marx Sedaris and see if there's a town council that is interested.
I think.
Okay, alright, I'll do that.
Kind of courtesy of.
Alright.
New business?
Oh, yes, new business, that's the end of new business, I think, that's on the agenda. And any requests for information?
I have a new business.
Oh, you do?
This is a question.
Okay.
What's happening about the sixth trustee? Whose, whose hands is that in?
It's in the hands of the town council.
The town council.
So's Mark, okay.
Mark and the council.
Cause they have to decide.
That's a hundred percent.
Yeah, they have to decide whether they want to do a. They have to decide whether they want to do a special election, or if they want to do an appointment process.
I think the primary was the third one, I think they had, that place, the March third date, would be not a special election, they're tagging, we have to, the town will have to request for the state government to add another, add, add to ballot during the primary.
The.
Yeah.
So then, once they decide which of those three is going to be done, then how the selection process is going to be done? Well, dude, and last time, when you were appointed, it was a trustee operation with Mark Sedaris.
That's correct.
And it wasn't.
I do hope.
No, but it was all of us.
I think we're all.
You were excited.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Okay. The power, right, is that right?
What's that?
Is that the discretion of the council, how they design the process? It's not laid out anywhere.
Does that mean the council?
No, it is laid out in the.
Oh, it is, okay, right.
Okay.
So it should be coming up on their agenda, I would think, and we'll know soon.
Right.
Cause what I was thinking too is, it's kind of lining up well with the steering, with the.
Strategic.
Strategic planning, because that's kind of a good feeder for, for trustees.
For the trustees, maybe a little.
There was somebody who walked into a party with three town councils there, who looks like she might be the right person.
Oh.
And, and then Phillip had somebody in mind also, I've personally talked to her, so. Again, trying to find the right kind of person for this position. Alright, thank you.
Any other business? Okay, request for information? Should we go around?
No.
All set, nothing.
No.
Um, so, the date of the next meeting?
Well, we have January twenty-second for our strategic plan.
Right.
And then I think February third is the next meeting. Fourth, February fourth.
So it's February fourth?
Yeah. And January twenty-second for our strategic plan, and that's in the Strangial Room.
Seven o'clock.
Yes.
And you will get an email from me sometime next week with the resource guide and any other details, and we'll also have a schedule on that.
And the other, and then members?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, I think we're ready to return?
Both of you are.
Uh, second.
Alright, ready to return? Thanks very much.
Nice one.